Hello and welcome to today's forum featuring candidates for the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors District Four. This seat was vacated by Roberta McGlashan. I am Tricia Erhämmer, a member of the League of Women Voters of Sacramento, and I'm happy to be moderating today's forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County and the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. The forum is being viewed live by an audience here in the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors chambers and by a live cable television audience at home. It is also being taped for rebroadcast on Metro Cable Channel 14. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization of both men and women established to promote political responsibility through active and informed participation in government. The League does not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties. Although our nonpartisan policy does not permit endorsement of political candidates, we do, after careful study, take positions on political issues. The format for today's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will make a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement. Next, the candidates will respond to questions from our expert media panel. The questions were submitted by the panelists and reviewed by League. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question, and if they choose, they may have up to a 15-second rebuttal. Finally, candidates will each make a one-minute closing statement. In the interest of time and decorum, I ask our audience here in the chambers to hold all applause until the end of today's forum. Now it's my pleasure to introduce the candidates who are running for the Board of Supervisors District Four. And they have drawn straws to indicate the order of their seating and the questions. To my far right, Sue Frost. Gary Blenner. To my near left, Carrie Howell. Mike Kozlowski. And Teresa Stanley. Welcome and thank you for participating in today's forum. Sitting on our expert media panel of questionnaires, we have three. Nadia Otterstad from Citrus Heights Sentinel. Joan Liberty from Gold River Community Association. And Norman Trump, also from Gold River Community Association. Thank you for taking the time and the effort to be here today. We are now ready to begin with opening statements. Sue Frost, you have the first opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Sue Frost, and I'm running for county supervisor. I'm running to make fiscal responsibility, personal liberty, and public safety the top priorities in Sacramento County, and to help veterans and reduce homelessness. I serve on the Citrus Heights City Council and recently completed my term as mayor. I was a registered nurse, and I've been a business owner for 33 years in the field of mortgage lending and real estate investing. I'm a community volunteer, and I served on several regional boards. I'm running for supervisor because I want to listen to and fight for the residents in District Four. It's our job to deliver the best services we can afford. Public safety is the number-one priority for government. We have to meet that responsibility, not with just words, but by prioritizing it in the budget. I'm running for supervisor because I know we must live within our means. I'm running for supervisor because I want to create an environment where businesses can grow jobs. That's how we grow revenues to the county without increasing taxes. I'm running for supervisor because I know we need to fix our infrastructure, which means roads, highways, but also means safeguarding our water supply. I'm running for supervisor because I know government cannot and should not try to do it all, but also we have a responsibility for our underserved and vulnerable. The only promise I'll make is that I'll work hard and listen to you. You can learn more about me on my website, electsuefrost.com.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you and good afternoon. I want to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters and SacMetro Channel 14 for the opportunity given to the candidates today. This election coming up on June 7th is about the future. It's about the future of what Sacramento County is going to become as we move forward. Are we going to continue with the same policies of the past, of the same policies that were currently implemented by the Board of Supervisors, the same failed policies that we've had for the past 12 years of artificially high taxes, of substandard county services, of policies that are bought and paid for by greedy, wealthy land speculators who contribute large sums of money to candidates and then expect services rendered for payment received? I believe that we need to move in a 180-degree opposite direction from everything the board has been doing for the past 10 years. I want to do things like reform government. I want to fix the roads with good-paying union jobs so that we can have a stimulus for the economy. I want to do something about the homeless issue. The time for talk has ended. We don't need task force. We don't need to check with this person or that person. The time is now for action. I want to improve public safety. I would like to be able to pay for the restoration of all public services that have been cut in the county since 2006 with a community bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Blenner. Carrie Howell?
Thanks to the League for hosting this candidate forum, and thank you to those that are sitting here in the audience today and those that are watching at home, either today or sometime in the very near future. I've served on the Folsom City Council for the last 18 years and on the Folsom Planning Commission for four years before that. As part of my responsibility as a councilmember in Folsom, I've served on numerous regional boards and commissions. I've chaired the Regional Sanitation District Board. I'm currently Chair of the Sacramento Transportation Authority Board. I've served on most of the regional water agencies in the area. I have the experience, both with Folsom issues as well as regional issues, because I've been doing it for the last 18 years. My priorities for the region include public safety, making sure that the Sheriff's Department, probation, and the District Attorney's Office have the staff, budget, personnel, technology, and tools that they need to do their job. I think economic development is also one of the highest priorities for the region as a whole. We need to bring new employers with high-paying jobs to Sacramento. We also need to deal with our transportation difficulties as well as infrastructure. I'm a small business owner, and I'm licensed in civil and corrosion engineering, and have been doing that for 35 years, so if there's anyone who knows how to fix our transportation and infrastructure issues, it's me. I appreciate your support, and I look forward to serving you for the next four years.
Thank you. Mike Kozlowski.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for the League of Women Voters hosting this, and I think it would be inappropriate for us to let this introduction go by without saying Happy Mother's Day to everyone since we're so close, particularly to my wife and chief financial advisor for the last 24 years. So Happy Mother's Day, Kim and my mom, and the others who are watching. As I said, I'm Mike Kozlowski. I'm an architect. I'm a businessman. I'm a high school track and field coach, and I'm an enthusiastic amateur sports announcer. And like everybody that lives here in Sacramento County, I think we can agree that there are some very simple things that we all want. One is a budget at the county that is matched to the services that we all need, and one that's sensible and sustainable for the long haul without new or higher taxes. Second thing is a chance for each of us to find a good-paying job here in Sacramento without making long car trips to the Bay Area. And then the third thing is the most elemental, which is just safe streets and neighborhoods to live in and raise our families. I'm seeking your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Teresa Stanley.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Stanley, and I'm asking for your vote today to help to bring this county forward in three priority areas. The first being to grow our local economy and jobs. The second, to keep our neighborhoods and streets safe. And the third, to ensure fiscal solvency, transparency, and accountability without raising taxes. During my years as a Folsom-Cordoba School Board trustee, I've helped to build one of the best public school systems in the tri-county region. We have high student test scores and innovative educational programs that we actually implemented during times when we were cutting our budget. I'm proud to say that several of our schools have received national and state honors. No other candidate for District Four County Supervisor has achieved the same level of success that I have with our district. I intend to bring the same results-oriented leadership to the County Board of Supervisors. As the owner of two local businesses, I understand the negative impacts caused by Sacramento County's anti-business practices. In fact, Forbes Magazine ranked Sacramento, the Sacramento region, the third worst in the nation for attracting businesses. Our regulations are excessive and difficult to maneuver. Our fees are inflated beyond what they need to be, in my opinion. Businesses don't want to locate here, and I'm asking for your vote to allow me to make those things better for Sacramento County.
Thank you. As you can tell from the opening statements, this is a very diverse district, and it reaches geographically across a number of communities, including Folsom, Far Oaks, Citrus Heights, Gold River, and more. So we'll go to the question-and-answer portion of this forum to find out more about the issues to help you, the voter. Nadia, would you please direct the first question first to Sue Frost?
Earlier this year, Sacramento County Supervisors approved the creation of a new Director of Homeless Initiatives at a cost of $217,000 a year in salary and benefits. The decision to do so was questioned by the Bee in an editorial titled "More Bureaucracy Is Not a Solution for Homelessness." Do you support the Supervisor's decision? Why or why not?
So at the time, I came out and stated that I thought that $217,000 was a lot to pay a homeless coordinator, and I was told that because that person reaches across many levels and into many areas, that that type of expertise was required. Homelessness is a growing problem in the Sacramento region, and it's definitely something that we need to focus on and do something about. I would submit that the first place that we could invest our resources would be in public safety. Homelessness, the problem of homelessness seems to bring a certain element of what I call the aggressive homeless, and those are people that have been released, prisoners that have been released into our streets because of, as a result of bad policy that's relieving the state prison population. And our probation should be the first place we invest funds to help our homeless situation.
Thank you. Gary?
This is exactly what's wrong with the county. The idea of hiring somebody at $217,000 a year to coordinate something that has a very easy solution to it. This is part of the entire county waste that taxpayers still have to fund, exactly what I alluded to in my opening statement. The way we take care of the homeless issue, and I know this sounds like a radical proposition, let's build homes for the homeless. Let's look at what happened in Salt Lake City. Here is, again, not a left-leaning, loony city, but they actually built studio homes for the homeless. They put them in those homes. They then restored the funding for mental health treatment and for addiction services, and they were able to stabilize the situation. I don't like the idea that we assume that the homeless are prisoners or vagrants. These are people who were down from the Great Recession. In some cases, these are veterans, people who fought for this country, who have been neglected. And I think we need to have a more humane treatment when it comes to the homeless. We need to also recognize that there are families involved, children, and they need our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
The homelessness issue is much broader, I think, than a lot of people realize, and if you look at the total number of people that live in Sacramento County, it's approaching 1.4 million people, and regionally, it's about 2.6 million. That's a lot of landmass, as the moderator indicated earlier. There's homeless populations everywhere you go throughout the county. So with regard to the total salary and benefit package of $217,000, I think it's a very large land area. There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and I think there does need to be coordination. There needs to be more participation throughout the region for all of us to find good solutions for the homelessness that's ongoing in the county. And I think that having a coordinator to oversee that massive effort is a very, very good start, and I look forward to working to find good solutions to those issues.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, the idea of having a homeless coordinator is fairly straightforward. It's something that needs to be done. The county has the principal responsibility to deal with homeless issues and provide a lot of the services that they need to move from homeless status to being in treatment or in a permanent place to live. Whether or not the salary is too high, that's, you know, a function of a lot of different things that go into it. Would I like to have somebody do it for less money? Sure. But if we get the results and we get the 35,000 or 36,000 or 3,700 people that are homeless today in Sacramento County into some permanent housing and treatment, I think it's a good solution.
Thank you. And Teresa?
I just want to address just the question that was answered instead of the entire homelessness issue, the homeless, the Director of Homeless Initiatives. When I looked at the website for Sacramento's recent Big Day of Giving, there were no less than a dozen different organizations that dealt with homeless and those populations and served those populations. I have always said that one of the things that we need to do is partner with the nonprofits and the faith-based ministries and the kinds of organizations that are already out there doing these things, and we need to pull them together. So I see some benefit to having a director who can hopefully marshal those resources and pull them together. The salary range, I'm not sure that that's necessary. Being in government for a long time, I understand that there's typically an upward slinky effect where you think you need to pay the most to attract somebody to your district, and it's not always accurate.
Thank you. Joan, will you please direct the next question first to Gary?
Good afternoon. Nice to be here. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. I'm going to speak specifically to District Four as being a wide-range, diverse area, which includes dozens of homeowner associations, from those containing thousands of homes, such as Rancho Marietta and Gold River, to those of fewer, less than 100 homes. Within Gold River, just as an introduction, I am the general manager for Gold River, so I work with Mr. Trump on overseeing the business operations for that large community. And one of the questions is, do you feel that there are unique factors of concern to residents of those micro-communities which differ from residents who do not reside in associations? And how would you consider those different and look to that for the future?
Well, I am, I believe, the only candidate who lives in an unincorporated area of Sacramento County, and so I know that Citrus Heights and Folsom are sort of semi-autonomous with regards to county services. And so I think that the concerns of any homeowners' association are the same, really, in any other part of the county. But I mean, I would like to address the issue of those that live in small communities, of those who live in Rio Linda, Elverta, Antelope, Orangevale, and so forth, that we seem to feel neglected by the county in the sense of that the response times for the police, for the Sheriff's Department are not very good, that we seem to have substandard roads, that we seem to not have the same types of county processes when it comes to public transit and with the homeless. The issues are the same throughout the district. It's just that the unincorporated areas and in some of these small towns were not getting the same services, and that's one of the issues I want to address as county supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
There's, again, as was stated earlier today, there's a lot of diversity in the district. There are gated communities. There are completely unincorporated communities, Gold River, Rancho Marietta being two very good examples. A lot of the issues in Gold River and Rancho Marietta specifically are taken care of by those homeowners' association. So with regard to pavement issues that plague the vast majority of the county, Gold River and Rancho Marietta are lucky in that they have facilities available, and monetary facilities specifically, to address a lot of those issues. My objective in dealing with the wide variety of issues, depending upon where you are in the district, will be to keep very open lines of communication between myself and all of the people that live in the district to deal with the variety of issues that come up depending upon where you are in the county.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, you know, in my opening statement, I said that I think we all share a few very common, simple desires out of our local government and our communities, and that's public safety, the chance to find a good job and a nice place to live. The thing I think that affects smaller communities that are either in incorporated areas and not incorporated areas is their desire to have a homogeneous kind of community. And the effects of outside services that happen throughout the county that affect those, I think, are some of the stuff that we've started to talk about, which is the homeless issue is one of them. If the county isn't providing mental health services appropriately or in enough volume, you've got this distribution of homeless people scattered throughout the county that aren't getting the services that they need, and that affects every one of us regardless of where we happen to live or choose to live in the county.
Thank you. Teresa?
I think that communities with homeowners' associations are lucky in the respect that if they've got an active one, they can have a shared voice that they can use to influence their local government. I think that the cities within the county have even more voice already because they've got a localized government in their own city councils. I am the only candidate here who has represented both cities, more than one, and unincorporated communities. I know that equity doesn't necessarily mean equal, that sometimes you have to give more to communities that need more. Sometimes you have to give a louder voice to those who don't have their own local government in the cities. I understand how to do that, and I listen to people, and I believe that I can bring to the table the ability to address the diverse concerns within District Four.
Thank you. And Sue?
The District Four consists of two incorporated cities, and I believe it's five unincorporated areas. And each one of those unincorporated areas has a personality of their own with different needs and concerns. I believe that each one of those unincorporated areas should be treated with respect, and we should do, I look forward to doing everything I can to help them accomplish their goals for their community. I've noticed, as I've watched Supervisor McGlashan, that she's formed special districts. She holds meetings in all the areas. She's formed visioning committees. Her staff work very closely with the citizens when they need help. She works very closely with local government and has had a wonderful relationship with those of us in Citrus Heights. And the community policing that the sheriff does, I was over in Rio Linda, and they are doing a wonderful job working with the community. I want to continue in that tradition.
Thank you. Norman, would you please direct the next question first to Carrie Howell?
Thank you. In our website, Roberta McGlashan indicates that her number-one priority has been law enforcement and also fiscal discipline. In your opening statements, you covered quite a bit of ground on various topics, but if you had to pick two topics that you would stress, not that the others aren't important, what two would those be?
Public safety and economic prosperity, bringing new employers into the region with good-paying jobs and expanding our economy. With regard to public safety, as I said in my opening statement, I think it's important that we pay close attention. Right now, the portion of the county's budget that the county has most control over is what's in the general fund, which is a little bit less than $600 million. At the moment, about 70% of that is being spent on public safety, which is the Sheriff's Department, probation, and the District Attorney's Office. We need to look at those numbers, make sure that they have the appropriate staffing and the appropriate budget tools and technology to get their jobs done so that the community that all of us live in is safe.
Thank you. Mike?
I also would stress public safety. It's the elemental thing that makes this place livable and why we want to be here. Beyond that, I would say, as I just said, that the ongoing issue of homelessness is something that we have to straighten out one way or another. There's going to be, like I said, 3,700 or 3,800 people tonight who are not housed properly, and that means getting our mental health services in order. It means taking some burdens off of the Sheriff's Department that they have right now for shuttling people, and it means taking some responsibility off of our system of local hospitals who are currently being used as a waystation for transitioning people through various services. If we get those things right, we'll be on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
The top two priorities for me will be economic development and creation of jobs, and as everyone else has said so far, public safety. Our region is poised right now to make the most of a decent economy that's coming back, a place where we have educational institutions and we have relatively affordable housing. We need to do more than market this region. We need to get out and identify sectors where we can grow, and we need to incentivize businesses, employees, and employers to come here. Public safety deserves a lot of the budget, and the budget always shows what your priority is. If you look at somebody's budget, you'll know what their priorities are. It includes the DA, the jails, probation, the sheriff, park rangers, and they're all important components of public safety. Government can provide, put a lot of taxpayer money into providing amenities, and if people don't feel safe, they're not going to come out and use them.
Thank you. Sue?
The top priorities are, public safety is number one, and budget management, budget discipline goes right along with that, because without money, you don't have resources to pay for public safety. We should start with probation because probation has suffered the most as a result of state policy that is releasing prisoners into our neighborhoods. We also need to find a way to be more job-friendly and support our businesses by lowering taxes and fees and regulations and making it easier for them to accomplish their dreams instead of putting a lid on them. We are the, we have so many amazing unrealized assets in our region. One example is we are the 22nd-largest market in the nation, and yet we're not even on the top 50 list for meeting destinations. There's opportunity coming to us, and we have to find a way to make it easier for those businesses to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gary?
No business is going to move to this area until we get our house in order. And if I had to pick two priorities, it would first be to restore the basic services that the county has cut since the beginning of the Great Recession, since the housing bubble burst. So we need to put money into fixing the roads. No business is going to come here unless, you know, their workers have a means of actually getting from point A to point B. We need to make sure that we have restored cuts, yes, I think, to public safety, but I sort of view public safety more than just the Sheriff's Department. How about adult protective services, child protective services, mental health issues? That has got to be part of it. We need to get our house in order, provide the services we expect from government. The secondary thing, as I alluded to beforehand, we have got to take care of the homeless issue. That has to be one of the top priorities as well. Again, we cannot allow, just as a basic human project, we cannot allow the homeless situation to continue. They need homes. They need help, and those would be my top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, ready to move to the next question. Nadia, would you please direct it first to Mike?
If elected, you will face numerous votes and decisions over your four-year term as supervisor. Share with voters three main principles that will guide your decisions in office.
Well, I think there's some straightforward things that are guiding principles for me, and that's if enacting some new regulation or ordinance requires new spending, that spending's going to have to come from somewhere. spending is going to have to come from somewhere else. I don't see any reason for us to burden taxpayers with additional regulations. In fact, and then the second thing is, I'd like to see all of our county services find ways to be more efficient and reduce costs. So I would be looking for ways to reduce regulation and simplify things. I would be looking for ways to spend the money that we already collect in taxes. And then finally, as it relates, and I'm sure we'll get to a question eventually, development in the county, I think the key development principle that I take to decisions about that, which is an important thing that supervisors have to do, is that if the new development doesn't add an unnecessary burden on our services and it fills an economic need, we should press forward.
Thank you. And Teresa?
Supervisor Nila once recently said that it's very important to listen to those who support you, but it's more important to listen to those who do not, who are adversaries. And I found that to be true in my service on the school board, is that when you actually listen to people, you can usually, and if you hear them, you can usually find a joint compromise solution to an issue. So that would be one of the things that would be a primary, a primary, basic thing that I would want to do, is listen to everybody, talk to people. I would want to ensure that whatever is being voted on, regulation or service, would be something that's an essential government service, that something that government really should provide for the community, not something that they just want to do to be nannies, for example. And the third principle that I would use is to look at it and make sure that it's a fiscally responsible decision.
Thank you. Sue?
Honesty, transparency, common sense, can we afford it, are my first. Second is strategic policy that fuels the economy and feeds job opportunities and creates local growth in the region. I think a lot of times policymakers are quick to come up with policy that they feel will bring revenues to fix a problem, but a lot of times there are unintended consequences that end up costing us more. So we should be slower to make those decisions and strategic, and we should be including our business community and our top economists in the region in those discussions so that we can ensure that our policy is going to increase jobs and revenues to the county so that we have more money to fix roads and do the other things we need to do. And lastly, liberty. I think our constitutional rights are important, individual rights, property rights, and I always take that into account when I'm making policy decisions.
Thank you. Gary?
My number-one factor would be to put people first, people before special interests, people before profits. That means, again, that sometimes the developer won't get their way, and again, you know, just because somebody has received contributions from the BIA, the Builders Association, or from other greedy land speculators, doesn't mean that their policies have to be put into effect. So I would, again, put people before profits. The secondary thing is, we need smart growth strategies. The idea, again, that we need to protect the environment. Are there enough low-income housing available? That would be another thing that I would think of in any type of project coming before the board. And the third is just some common-sense solutions. Again, we don't need $217,000 for a homeless coordinator, we need to stop a lot of the waste. The prosecution of the homeless is in and of itself criminal. That is a total waste of money for which the county and the district attorney has to spend money on. That's the type of behavior I would want to stop in policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
The County Board of Supervisors makes decisions about a wide variety of topics, from development to budgets to healthcare to mental health care and everything in between those. The way I have made my decisions, based on my 18 years on the Folsom City Council, is to listen to everybody. What typically happens at a Board of Supervisors meeting, just like at a city council meeting, is you'll get the people that feel the strongest on either side of the issue, and usually it's the most polarized people that take the time to attend the meeting. So you have to listen to both sides. You have to look at what is best for the community as a whole, whether it's a development issue or deciding moving money from one part of the budget to another, what's best for the community? Is it fiscally responsible? And is it going to make the community as a whole a better place to live, work, and do business? And that's basically what drives my decision-making process.
Thank you. Let's see, I think we're with Joan, and would you please direct the question first to Teresa?
I shall. Hi, Teresa.
Hi.
One of the, just to change the subject a little bit here, talking about auto-alternative transit within the county, light rail, buses, bicycles, here are a lot of the conversation regarding the tug-of-war for finances and resources, and our local transportation system is definitely under that challenge as well. So what is one new, meaningful change you might push that is actually doable in the future to be able to address this concern?
For the alternative transportation, I think it's a mistake to go to new taxes first, and that, I think, is where the county is currently headed. I think that RT has been identified as having some intrinsic issues with their system, and it's not maintainable in its current condition. So the first thing that I would do is probably to study that, the RT piece of it and the light rail, to see not only how we're going to afford to replace and update infrastructure, but also to really do a good review about whether or not decreasing routes as a potential money savings issue doesn't also actually decrease your revenue because you have fewer routes and fewer riders. So there, I think we need to take a look at what other successful communities are doing with good transportation infrastructure and model that.
Thank you. Sue Frost?
I would fix the system first. I know we have a new possible Measure B that will be on the ballot, coming on the ballot in November, and I think, you know, having been paying into Measure A for all these years since the '90s, and people are still wondering why their roads aren't fixed, and our regional transit has the highest fares in the nation, and they're on the, they're insolvent, basically insolvent on the verge of bankruptcy, to invest more taxpayer dollars into organizations that have a failing business model doesn't seem very sensible. I think we need to look at the system and fix it, and we need to show the taxpayers that we can manage their money well and that, before we go back and ask them for more money. So my thought would be fix the system first and then take on projects that we know are important, that will fuel the economy, and do them one at a time, and finish them, and finish them. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
I am completely opposed to the idea of a Measure B. I think that people in our district are taxed enough as it is, and I agree with Ms. Frost. I think that money that we have invested from Measure A has not been well-spent, that there are too many potholes, that there are too many other areas that we have not done well in terms of improvement. I think the way that we go forward is to go with a county-owned community bank. And I urge anybody watching or here in the audience to look at what North Dakota has done. North Dakota has had the lowest unemployment rate, they're the only state during the Great Recession to run a budget surplus, and what they do is that they fund projects, they fund projects to help the community, and they do it without raising taxes. The debate that they have in North Dakota is what to fund or whether or not the people deserve a tax cut. I think that's a debate that we could have here in this county, and we could use some of the revenue from that bank to finally fix, enough of the talk already, fix the roads, the overpasses, the levee system. If we get a big earthquake down in the Delta, we're done for if it's during the rainy season. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
There are a lot of transportation issues in the region, and they vary, the important needs vary depending upon where you go. Sacramento County is 950 square miles, that's a lot of roads, that's a lot of existing bike trails, that's a lot of existing bus routes. There's a lot of needs within the county, and it varies, those needs vary depending upon where you go. The objective of Measure B is to bring the total amount of local match funding to the point where we can fix the roads. Right now, the split on Measure B is 70% roadways, 30% transit-related. The 30% of that money that will go to transit will be to replace equipment at RT. RT is under the same mandate that everyone else in the region is under, where 75% of the money in the first five years goes to fixing it first, and that means whether it's pavement or vehicle replacement at RT, that's where the money has to go before any new work can be undertaken. The county, the unincorporated part of the county has been hit the hardest with existing pavement issues that must be fixed.
Thank you. Mike?
I think my answer is similar to what you've heard from the other candidates, but we definitely need to take a hard look at the RT system to make sure that it's right-size to the ridership. But I think going a little bit different route, we can actually take a look at the blueprint for Sacramento County and the region and do more to incentivize infill housing and do more to incentivize businesses and developers to locate within the corridors that are served by the existing RT system. Largely, the issue that we have is that we have a very large system that covers a wide-ranging area, but I can't imagine, if I lived in Citrus Heights, taking the time to drive over to Folsom to catch the light rail, because it just adds a tremendous extra step to the process. So we can do a lot to incentivize business and create infill housing and infill businesses along the corridors that are served and get more bang for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you. Norman, would you please direct the next question first to Sue Frost?
We elect people to office, and then we think, well, if he's got a Christmas card afterwards, it'd be nice. My question is, and this is to everyone, if your background is in public service, how do you interact with your constituents at this time? And if your background is in business, how would you react with your constituents, how interact with them if you were elected?
So, how I, I am public service, I'm a small business owner, but in December of 2014, I discontinued my mortgage activities, knowing that I was going to be mayor in Citrus Heights in 2015. I have interacted with a newsletter, I go to the neighborhoods and meet with the neighborhood associations. I oftentimes am called to have coffee because people have issues and they need help, and so I have responded to those meetings by helping. Like, when the veterans came to me and asked for help raising money, we did a Vets Helping Vets Battle the Bans. And when the neighborhoods came and said, Sue, we're upset because the city doesn't listen, communications are impeded, we don't have enough money, then we did an educational event we planned all year in my home, brought them into my home and called on a committee to come together, and 20 people volunteered. So I'm active and engaged in the community and plan to continue that at the county level.
Thank you. Gary?
I served on the Southern Unified School District from 2006 to 2010, and in that elected capacity, I met with various constituency groups. What's nice about Antelope and Alberta, at least the western half of Antelope and Alberta, is that it's a relatively small community, and so you get to know everybody, you get to meet with the boosters, you get to meet with different groups and parent concerns, and I served on budget committees and so forth that had a lot of public involvement. And so, meeting with the various constituency groups would be very important to me. What I have been doing in this campaign is I've been going around the district and meeting in town halls. We had one in Orangevale, we had one up in Antelope, we've been, when I say "we," myself and the next supervisor from District Three, Sean Dillon, and I have been going around and meeting with various constituents. And so, I would continue with that. I would meet again with the neighborhood association groups, with various constituency groups. I believe that as a community, we need to build a coalition to get things done. That's what I've done on the school board, that's what I would continue to do on the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Well, first, I would continue Roberta's practice of having the neighborhood meetings she meets in each part of the district at least monthly. I would continue to do that, and as I have done on the Folsom City Council, I make myself extremely available. Everybody in Folsom, I believe, has my cellphone number, so my email is, I'm extremely easy to reach, my home phone number's in the phone book. Excuse me, when someone contacts me, they either get me directly or get a phone call back. If somebody sends me an email, I respond to them directly, and I will continue to do that. I love to hear from the folks in the community, and I've been doing that in Folsom for 18 years. Looking forward to getting the increased number of emails and phone calls when I'm representing the people of District Four.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, so I haven't been in a public office before, but there are some very obvious steps. What Roberta does currently, the community meetings, I also would continue those. That's a straightforward and appropriate thing to continue forever, it should be a responsibility, absolutely. But I think more importantly, and, you know, the county supervisor has a lot of jobs, they kind of have to be a judge on making decisions about things, but they have some real important responsibilities to be a translator when issues come up from individuals or groups, to be able to turn those things into actionable items that the county can do, and then also just kind of be in an ombudsman and be able to connect people with services when that's necessary. So taking those responsibilities seriously and continuing the outreach process that Supervisor McGlashan has had would be my process. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
Well, I like that Mike said we need to be a judge, because I have been a judge in Sacramento County on a pro temp basis. I've been elected five times to serve the most precious assets of families and communities, their own children. There's nothing more important to an individual family than when there's an issue with their child. Although I have been an elected official, I consider myself more of a community member than a politician, because you do have to deal regularly, one-on-one with families. My phone number has always been listed, my email address is widely given out, and even my cellphone number, I give out to a lot of people. And I talk to them, when they call, I will talk to them, when they email me, I email back. People, when I've been out in the district, people know Roberta McGlashan. It's amazing how many people say, oh, yeah, I know her personally, and I would like to be that person also, to be out there in the district and actually speaking to the community with them.
Thank you. I think we have time for one last question. Nadia, would you please direct it first to Gary Blinn?
Every election, there's concern raised by voters and, apologize, concern raised by voters about politicians being controlled by donors and special interests. Share with voters who your top-two donors are and how much they have donated this election season. You can also share how these donations would or would not affect the decisions you make.
Well, I'm proud to say that I have not received any contributions from any developers. I have not received any contributions from any chamber of commerce groups. I am being funded, much like Bernie Sanders, I'm being funded by small donors. I mean, I can give you the names of my top-two donors. One is from an organization called Canacare. They are the medicinal marijuana dispensary group that's within the city of Sacramento. One of the things that I would like to achieve, and it's not because of the donation they gave me, one of the things I would like to achieve is the lifting of the ban of medicinal marijuana dispensaries in Sacramento County in particular, in the fourth supervisory district. I also received a donation from Jeff Krabitz, who was the candidate in District Three trying to unseat Susan "Pothole" Peters from office. I think that, again, a grassroots movement for change, not money from the BIA, from the Builders Association, not from chambers of commerce, not from developers, is the way that we're going to turn things around in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Howell?
The support to my campaign, there's been a number of people that have contributed the maximum contribution, which in this raises $1,000 to my campaign. My support, financial endorsements, has been very broad, regardless of political party, large businesses, small businesses, and individuals alike. Again, I've served on the city council for 18 years, and I've gotten donations from developers, I've gotten donations from environmentalists, and they will all tell you that I listen to all sides of the story, and even the people in the development community, they may get their project approved, but I make sure that whatever the project is going to look like is good for the community, and that if everybody walks away a little bit unhappy, then you've probably made the right decision.
Thank you. Mike?
So I'm not sure what categorizes you as your top donor necessarily, but I think I'm the top donor to my own campaign. I've far outstripped everybody who's given me any money to do that. I've far outstripped everybody who's given me any money to do this. I have had the support of a couple of builder groups, though, the Associated Builders Council and the Placer County Builders Exchange. And both of them, we have common cause. The existing processes at Sacramento County for getting projects approved are onerous, and they take far, far, far too long for even the simplest retrofit that would be necessary for a new business to move into a building, or an existing business to expand in the county. We keep them on hold for an inappropriate and indefinite amount of time. So we have a common cause in getting our development processes to be more streamlined here in the county, and that's why they were a donor to my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
Well, I think my top donors are Bob, Marilyn, Dave. They're not organizations, not people that would be necessarily well-known in Sacramento County. Even my campaign manager doesn't share my party preference, but people understand my integrity, and they believe in me, and they believe that I can do a good job. I think that independent expenditures in this county are going to make a much bigger difference than the individual donors, since there are campaign donor limits here. Unlike some of my fellow candidates here, I won't be beholden to the special interests, such as the developers and builders who are supporting them, most likely with a large amount of independent expenditure that'll come later in the campaign.
Thank you. And Sue Frost?
I believe to date, probably my top two supporters are the Sacramento Association of Realtors and the Rental Housing Association. In this campaign, individuals can contribute 500, and PACs or businesses can contribute 1,000, so I don't, I'm not positive. I believe I have over 45 individual contributors, and they range anywhere from five, the contributions range from $5 to $500, and some households, the wife gave 500, and the husband gave 500. So my contributions come from all over the district. Rio Linda, not so much from Antelope and Gold River, because I haven't had access, they don't have neighborhood, I haven't been able to get in and talk to them as much. But I have a lot, a huge amount of support from Citrus Heights and Orangevale and Folsom, and Rancho Marietta, and Rio Linda, and I appreciate all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the question-and-answer portion of this forum. We will now move to closing statements. And I believe we have time for a minute closing statement from each candidate. Sue Frost?
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Metro Cable for hosting today's forum. Thank you also to our moderators, and to the Citrus Heights Sentinel and Gold River Community Association for participating. I'm running for supervisor to make fiscal responsibility and personal liberty and public safety the top priorities in Sacramento County, and I want to work with the community to help veterans and reduce homelessness. We need to ensure that our neighborhoods are safe, make it easier to create jobs, and start planning for the future. We need boots-on-the-ground police, starting with probation, who play a critical role in pistol, with pistol-packing officers who oversee released prisoners, and who also work closely with our DA and investigations. We must grow our economy, not crush it with taxes. We should include the business community and top economists in the region in the conversation before we come to a decision on policies, so that we can strategize and create policy that removes barriers and promotes jobs and economic vitality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Blinn?
I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters and Sac Metro Cable Channel 14 for the opportunity given to us today. I'm a high school teacher. I'm a former school board member with the Center Unified School District. I served one term from 2006 to 2010. I am not a professional politician. I am not tied with the establishment or the downtown elite. What I do have are the courage of my convictions, which, again, say that we need to move the county in a drastically different direction than what Roberta McGlashan and Susan Peters have led us down over the past 10 to 12 years. I, again, would like to reform government, fix the roads, solve the homeless issue, attract green jobs to this area, a good-paying, decent living wage for our workers in the county. I also would like to pay for this through the creation of a community bank. We don't have to raise taxes. So I would encourage all of you to check out my website, www.electgaryblinn.org, that's all in one word, and I respectfully ask for your vote on June 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Howell?
Thanks to all the people that contributed to putting this candidate forum together today, and thanks to all of you that are watching it here or at home. I've already said that I believe I have extensive experience both in the city of Folsom and in the region over the course of the last 22 years. I believe that we've had a lot of successes in Folsom in each of those areas that are my top priorities, public safety, economic development, transportation infrastructure. I want to take that experience, as well as my experience on the regional boards and commissions that I've led over the course of the last 18 years, and use that experience to better all of Sacramento County, District 4, and the region. I appreciate your listening to us today and bothering to get informed about the candidates' positions. I look forward to your support on June 7th. And if you have any questions or comments, or just want to know more about my campaign, www.votecarryhowell.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Kozlowski?
Thank you. I'd also like to add my thanks to the moderators, the League of Women Voters, and our questioners today. Thank you very much. I'm an architect. I've spent my entire career taking very complex programs and projects, disassembling them down to a way that they could be described in words and lines on paper. That process means that you are constantly trying to find new and innovative ways to deliver projects and buildings and pieces of buildings in the most cost-effective, most efficient way, okay? I'm well-suited to taking complex problems and finding innovative ways to resolve them. We have a lot of complex problems in Sacramento County right now, as has been apparent from our discussion today. I want to make sure that we are innovative, so that we can attract innovative businesses. I want to make sure that we're innovative, so that we can solve the problems that we have. And I want Sacramento County to be the best place in California to find a job, to run a business, and to raise your family. Please vote Mike Kozlowski for county supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last word, Teresa Stanley?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this opportunity possible, and to the Gold River Community Association and Citrus Heights Sentinel for the excellent questions. Today, I'm asking for your vote to make District 4 and all of Sacramento County a better place to live, work, build a business, and raise our families. As your supervisor, I'll stand against higher taxes. We already pay enough, if not too much. As your supervisor, I'll stand with the residents of Rio Linda, Alberta, Citrus Heights, Antelope, Orangevale, Folsom, Gold River, and Rancho Marietta, and I'll ensure that those communities are well-represented, whether they have their own city council or not. As your supervisor, I'll support tough measures to combat crime and reduce blight and nuisances, and look for effective solutions to address homelessness, especially for our veterans. I built my businesses here and raised my family here in District 4. My four children are graduates of this district. So with your support, I'm going to make Sacramento County work for you once again. Thank you, and please vote for Teresa Stanley for county supervisor. TeresaStanley2016.com.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sacramento and the Metropolitan Cable Television Commission of Sacramento, it is my turn to thank all of you for taking the time and energy to be with us today, as well as the panelists who developed the questions and came to offer their insights and help you, the voters. This forum has been designed to impart information to the voter in accordance with our belief that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We hope that the insights that you have gained from this forum will help you in making your decisions on Election Day. For voter information and rebroadcast times, please visit our Voters Edge website at votersedge.org, or the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County website at www.lwvsacramento.org. The League welcomes both women and men as members, and is where hands-on work to safeguard democracy leads to civic improvement. More than anything, remember to cast your vote on June 7th, and help make our democracy work. Thank you.